We're now going to our regularly scheduled council meeting for the night.
Yes. I'm here, yes.
We're now bringing this, we'll now bring it to order.
Good.
We'll be led in prayer by our city clerk. We do not have a flag. So we will bypass the pledge of allegiance. Madam clerk.
O God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted in judgment decree, assist us, we beseech thee that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be imminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
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 Madam clerk?
Resolution.
No, 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 madam clerk.
Roll call. Roll call. See, I didn't jump right into it.
I appreciate.
Before I begin, let me just make sure Councilwoman Williams is still not on the line.
No, she's here.
She is here?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors Williams?
Is she on mute?
She's muted.
Yes, unmute your phone, Councilwoman. Councilwoman should be at the bottom left-hand side of your screen. It should say mute. Give her a thumbs up. It should be a speaker at the bottom left-hand side of the screen or zoom screen. You click on it.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. Counselors, you work in?
Here.
Present.
Wes?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Thank you. Thank you, madam clerk. Can we move for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. At this time, we open up the lines to see if there are any public comments from our public by way of email or guess it's email. Are there any public comments? Have any public comments come into you, Bob?
There, I have three. And it's kind of a hybrid of about something on the agenda and not. So I think I'll read them now if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay. The comments from Adrian Webster, two four oh seven Chestnut Street, Chester, PA. I submitted information for last month's council meeting and listened on Facebook as it was addressed. Thank you very much for my concerns at November's meeting. I appreciate all the work our city officials do for the community. The city engineer, Michael Monte, should be submitting a proposal for December's council meeting regarding the property located at two four oh five Chestnut Street to obtain funds for demolition of the property. Please advise how I can validate to ensure this submission is received by your office. Thanks for all you do to help the Chester community. Adrian Webster. Second comment is also from Ms. Webster, same address. It reads, I wanted to say thank you for considering my issues and moving to resolve all concerns with the dilapidated property located at twenty four oh five Chestnut Street. I wanted to thank our honorable Mayor Kirkland for acknowledging my ongoing deeply troubling and financial drain and hardships this has caused my family. I also wanted to thank Mr. Michael Galante and Mr. Walker for visiting the property site, performing an inspection and determining this merits total removal as it's fallen down and will soon bring down my property with it, literally. I'm very fearful of the property condition at two four oh five Chestnut Street. I wanted to thank Mrs. Olivia Smith for reaching out to me as well, confirming this is on the radar of multiple departments in the city of Chester to be resolved. I look forward to moving forward and understand the legal procedures it must appear to under the law. I believe everyone is working as hard as they can to resolve this for the community and for my family. I appreciate all the hard work our city officials do to keep our community safe and clean for Chester residents. I will continue to keep in touch to remain abreast of progress at two four oh five Chestnut Street. I do have a third comment and I got it very late in the day. I have to admit, I haven't opened it yet. So let me make sure whether to see whether it is it is not related to the agenda. So read that afterward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And Ms. Webster, thank you for your patience. This is, as was stated, is on the agenda, on tonight's agenda. And we will move as swiftly as possible to alleviate this problem from, from the neighborhood. We appreciate your patience and your concern and your willingness to participate in this process by, by contacting myself and other members of council along with Mr. Galante and Ms. Smith. Our goal is to make sure that you have a safe surrounding. So we appreciate your comments. Hearing, hearing or seeing no other comment on the public agenda, Mr. Solicitor?
I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
No, I think, I'm sorry. I said, Mr. Solicitor. I should have said, madam clerk.
Okay.
My bad. Madam clerk.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the update of employment status from part-time to a full-time work schedule at the stated effective dates for the following individuals listed on the attached sheet with all benefits applicable beginning December first, twenty twenty. Further, said recall is in accordance with the approval of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that the public hearing for the twenty twenty-one budget shall be held on December thirtieth, twenty twenty at ten AM in City Council Chambers, second floor, one Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen. Further, that the final action on the twenty twenty-one budget ordinance will be taken at a special meeting of council to be held on December thirtieth, twenty twenty at ten thirty AM in Council Chambers, second floor, one Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Further, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to publish a notice of the date, time, and place of the fore-said hearing. Further, that a copy of said proposed budget may be obtained from the city clerk's office at a fee of ten dollars.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve the following is the list of the legal holidays for the city of Chester for the year twenty twenty-one. New Year's Day, Friday, January first. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Monday, January eighteenth. President's Day, Monday, February fifteenth. Good Friday, Friday, April second. Primary Election Day, Tuesday, May eighteenth. Memorial Day, Monday, May thirty-first. Flag Day, Monday, June fourteenth. Independence Day, Monday, July fifth, which is observed. Labor Day, Monday, September sixth. Columbus Day, Monday, October the eleventh. General Election Day, Tuesday, November second. Veterans Day, Thursday, November the eleventh. Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-fifth, and Friday, November twenty-sixth. And Christmas Day, Friday, December twenty-fourth, obtained, observed.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that the city council of the city of Chester will be holding deliberative only meetings in City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen at two o'clock PM prevailing local time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-one. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and/or state mandates. January the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. February eighth and the twenty-second. March eighth and the twenty-second. April twelfth and the twenty-sixth. May tenth and the twenty-fourth. June seventh and the twenty-first. July twelfth and the twenty-sixth. August ninth and the twenty-third. September seventh and the twentieth. October twelfth and the twenty-fifth. November eighth and the twenty-second. December sixth, thirteenth, and the twentieth. Further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester City Council will be held in City Council Chambers Municipal Building, one Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen at ten AM prevailing time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-one, except where designated by an asterisk, which meetings will be held at seven o'clock PM prevailing time. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and/or state mandates. January thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. February tenth and the twenty-fourth. March tenth will be a night meeting. March twenty-fourth is day. April the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. May twelfth and the twenty-sixth. June ninth's meeting is at night. June twenty-third is in the day. July fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. August the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. September eighth's meeting is in the evening. September twenty-second is in the day. October the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. November tenth and the twenty-fourth. December eighth's meeting is in the evening. December fifteenth and the twenty-second will be in the day. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester City Council, sitting as the board of revision of taxes, will be held in City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, ten thirty AM prevailing local time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-one. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and/or state mandates. January twenty-seventh. February twenty-fourth. March twenty-fourth. April twenty-eighth. May twenty-sixth. June twenty-third. July twenty-eighth. August the twenty-fifth. September twenty-second. October twenty-seventh. November the twenty-fourth. And December twenty-second. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester aggregate pension board will be held in City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, two thirty PM prevailing local time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-one. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and/or state mandates. January twenty-fifth. April twenty-sixth. July twenty-sixth. October twenty-fifth. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Aleah Calhoun as a violence prevention mentoring case manager. Mayor's Office, Department of Public Affairs, at the rate of twenty dollars and fifty-two cents per hour for no more than eighteen point seventy-five hours a week effective December seventh, twenty twenty. Further, said individual is an independent contractor and is not an employee of the city of Chester and shall not be entitled to any of the benefits normally provided for a state employee. As an independent contractor, the city will not deduct federal income tax or earn income tax from any payments made to the contractor.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on November nineteenth, twenty twenty, it does hereby grant final approval for Ali Tifani A NY Properties LLC to reverse subdivide three lots into one located at eight sixteen through eight twenty-two, West Second Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, as shown on a plan prepared by Catania Engineering Associates Incorporated, five twenty West McDay Boulevard, Millmott Park, PA, nineteen oh thirty-three, dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to submit an application to the Delaware County Demolition Program Blighted Property Demolition Fund to obtain funds for the demolition of the following properties. Property address, two eighteen Pennell Street. Folio number forty-nine dash zero eight dash zero one one eight four dash zero zero. And twenty-four oh five Chestnut Street. Folio number forty-nine dash zero one dash zero one six seven four dash zero zero. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated December seventh, twenty twenty, attached hereto and made a part herof, subject to approval for the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
Again.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Sorry.
Yes.
It's all right. Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number five and ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government herein after set forth during the twenty twenty-one calendar year. Excuse me. The council of the city of Chester does ordain section one that for the expenditures and expenses of the twenty twenty-one calendar year, the following amounts are hereby appropriated from the fund equities, revenues, and other financing sources available for the twenty twenty-one calendar year for the specific purposes herein set forth. Section two. The general fund budget for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at fifty-three million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, seventy-three dollars, and appropriated from the following revenues as more fully detailed in the attached exhibit A. Real estate taxes, nine million, six hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty. Taxes at five eleven, seventeen million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. Fines, one hundred sixty thousand. Licenses and permits, one million, four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred. Interest, rents, and royalties, four million, seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and three. Intergovernmental revenues, ten million, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty. Charges for services, six million, five hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred and two. Reimbursements, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. Other revenue, one million, seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, excuse me. Let me repeat and start over. One million, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-seven. Totalling fifty-three million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, seventy-three.
I moved that. Oh, you're gonna read the entire thing. I'm sorry.
Yes, it's okay. Section, section three. The general fund budget for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at fifty-three million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, seventy-three, and appropriated to the following departments as more fully detailed in the attached exhibit A. Department of Public Affairs, nineteen million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-eight. Department of Accounts and Finance, twenty-one million, five hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thirteen. Department of Public Safety, seven million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-six. Department of Public Works, four million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two. Operating transfers, one million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred four, totaling fifty-three million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, seventy-three. Section four. The state liquid fuels tax fund for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at eight hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-eight with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-one budget. Section five. The special revenue fund for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at seventy-five thousand with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-one budget. Section six. The debt service fund for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at three million, nine hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-one budget. Section seven. The DCCC fund for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at five hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventeen with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-one budget. Section eight. The capital improvement fund for the twenty twenty-one calendar year is hereby set at five hundred thousand with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-one budget. And section nine. That any ordinances conflicted with this ordinance be, and the same is hereby repealed, and so forth, as the same affects this ordinance.
So moved.
A second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. I move that we pass bill number five on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number five on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Abstain.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number six and ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting the earned income tax for the year twenty twenty-one as set forth in Article three oh three of the Codified Ordinances of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety without substantial change except for an amendment to section three oh three point zero two entitled, imposition of tax to impose a tax of two percent for twenty twenty-one for general revenue purposes or salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by non-residents of the city of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the city of Chester and to establish the earned income tax rate at three point seven five percent for twenty twenty-one on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by residents of the city of Chester providing for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and imposing penalties for violation thereof.
I move that we pass bill number six on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number six on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number seven and ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change for the year twenty twenty-one, the local services tax as set forth in Article three oh five of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within the corporate limits of the city of Chester at the rate of fifty-two dollars per year.
I move that we pass bill number seven on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number seven on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number eight. Ordnance and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting the tax rate for the year twenty twenty-one on our real property at thirty-two point seven seven one two mils and fixing the library tax at one point five mils.
I move that we pass bill number eight on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number eight on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morrigan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number nine and ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection nine two five point zero two one, entitled fees of Article nine twenty-five entitled refuse collection of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended by increasing the fee to two hundred dollars of subparts, A one and A two, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number nine on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number nine on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morrigan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number ten, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change the business, excuse me, the business privilege tax for the year twenty twenty-one is set forth in Article three oh seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in certain business within the City of Chester, except for the amendment to subsection three oh seven point zero two A, entitled rate and basis of tax of section three oh seven point zero two, entitled tax for general revenue purposes of said business privilege tax, to set the said rate of tax to three point zero mils for retail and two point zero mils for wholesale, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number ten on its first reading.
A second that we pass bill number ten on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morrigan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Scott, do we have comments?
I have one more here, Your Honor. This is from Nolan Fontaine of five oh nine Florence Drive. He asks, has the city looked into therapeutics for COVID-nineteen such as plasma therapy, regeneron, or interferon alpha two B, instead of primarily focusing on vaccines? Will the ci- city commit to looking into these supplemental medical solutions? Thank you for your time and be safe. Respectfully, Nolan L. Fontaine.
Thank you for your comments and question, Mr. Fontaine. We have been following the guidelines of both our, the city's health department as well as the county and directives from our state officials, the governor, and his office. We will, as they say, follow the science and work along with those individuals who are doing everything they can to bring this COVID disaster to an end to within our communities. I thank you for your comments and thank you for your concern. And we will act accordingly. Is that the last one?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, that's all.
Okay. First of all, I want to say, are there any questions or comments from members of council? Well, let me just say, I want to say thank you to Bob Scott, our city, our filling solicitor for, for the night. We miss you, Bob, and.
Thank you. It was nice. It was nice to see everybody.
It is. It is. And hope, hopefully, and prayerfully, you're staying safe as well.
So far, thank you.
We would like to also send out our prayers to our solicitor, Ken Schuster. His mother transitioned a few days ago, and that is the reason he's not with us today. So we want to make sure that we send our prayers and our thoughts, what our wishes out to him and his family. With that said, this council meeting is now adjourned.